Angie Rowling.
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner. Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of the minutes of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, accounts payable or warrants. Um, sorry. Correspondence, excess weight permits, gravel crushing bit award, planning commission interested participant meet and greet, reappoint E nine-one coordinator, open positions in reappointment discussion, old business, new town offices railing quotes, ARPA money discussion, public comment, executive for personnel, executive personnel discussion regarding a public official, public comment and adjourn.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, changes, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Hannah, any public comment?
No, hands up.
Um, approval of minutes, minutes of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, select board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Corrections, discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Minutes, March twen- or March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, special select board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Uh, Brian, I.
Mike, I. Warrants, counts payable three thirty-one, sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Accounts payable four seven, twenty-four thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Yes, I just have a question on the Bennington County Sheriff for the amount of three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Is that normal or that seems awfully low? I was just wondering if they were doing less hours.
It was low. We called and they said it was accurate. Um, the hours did seem less, but they did say it was accurate. They sent a revised bill. Um, so we had two bills that were for both like around three thousand. So we thought maybe they were together. Sheriff had me call and it was just a three thousand.
I just thought that seemed odd. Okay.
Um, while we're on that, something I brought up, Hannah, do they, when they send us a bill, do they send us a breakdown of the hours? I thought so. I just wanted to make sure.
And was there weekend hours on it?
Yes.
With a, the amount of pay as well? They break it down?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
They also give um, the amount of tickets that they write during that time and the amount of contacts they make. So it's pretty detailed and I will um, scan those in and get them to you guys. I'll get the last few months so you have something compared to.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Definitely.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Accounts payable four fourteen, twenty-three, eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions on that one? All those in favor, Angie?
I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Payroll three thirty-one, twenty-three, eleven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and seventy-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Payroll four seven, twenty-three, eleven thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike abstain. Payroll four fourteen, twenty-three, ten thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. All right. Correspondence, any correspondence, Tara?
Yes, I have two and I think Hannah has one. Um, but I'll start. I have one from our lister or assessor clerk. She is now Wendy. Um, in the past couple of years, real estate market has thrown us huge curveballs resulting in the state mandating a townwide reappraisal. This is a friendly reminder that the board needs to begin discussing um, and moving forward with this mandate. We have to establish a plan that we would like to employ to accomplish this task. Nemrick provides these services. They are approximately three to four years out on a waiting list, which we would need to get on to. This lapse in time will also allow us to add to our reappraisal budget. The state can be commissioned for the task, but as my opinion, private business will be better for us. I have C.C. Jacob in case we have any questions for him. So basically, I think she just wants sort of a go-ahead to contact Nemrick um, and to get on the waiting list.
Okay. So.
That's who's done it in the past too, right?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we allow Wendy to get on the waiting list for Nemrick for the reappraisal for the state. Is that correct?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? She's absolutely right. It was just a matter of time.
Right.
All those in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Bob, sorry.
Just a, um, I don't know how to say it. I don't want to create a firestorm either, but uh, but uh, do we have instructions for any individuals that would like to have their property reassessed? I mean, are there options for people to just uh, hire somebody, get an assessment and then come to the town with it? Or is it, it all has to be done at once and it has to be done by the town?
I believe this is a mandate by state.
It's a state mandate and I'm not sure the specifics. Wendy may have more details and if not, certainly Jacob will.
I believe after the appraisal, you get a grace period where you can grieve it.
Right.
And then you can have like somebody appraise your property professionally and present it if it's different.
Okay, but I just.
I may be wrong on that, but that's what it's been in the past.
Okay, but I think I just heard it was three to four years on a waiting list.
That's because the whole state is going through the whole.
No, I understand. I understand why the waiting list is that long, but I, but, but thinking about what the, what the task is. By the time it comes around, there will be substantially more changes in market value.
So I know that um, residents have the opportunity to um, submit grievances once a year uh, with Wendy. So once the tax bills go out, if people have um, questions, concerns or um, an issue with the amount, they contact Wendy and then Wendy works with Jacob to figure out, you know, um, can it be changed or does it need to stay the same in comparison with our other properties?
Okay, that, that, that makes good sense. And sorry, I, I'm done asking questions and.
Okay. No problem. The, the other letter is from Mr. Wellklinger.
We need to go on this one, Tara first.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
You're jumping the gun on us.
I am. I am.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Okay, Tara.
Okay, so um, our BCRC um, representative, Wellklinger, sent in just an update. Gentlemen and ladies, on Thursday the sixteenth of March twenty-third, twenty-three, sorry, I attended a regular meeting of the Bennington County Regional Commission. The main topic presented was the review of FEMA flood map revisions for Bennington County. Mr. Ned Swanberg, Flood Plane Manager with the Vermont Department of Environmental Comfort Conservation, reviewed and discussed the various flood zone revisions and proposed control features that are being incorporated into the country flood maps. Sorry, county. The process is ongoing and will continue to have a periodic public and town review points in the next couple of years as the map updates continue. The revised maps will become critical to future flood plane development and control. The new revised maps will likely make zoning revisions desirable and or necessary. Towns are advised to keep aware of and participate in the updating process so that they can adjust their future development plans for flood plane areas. This may have impact here in Powell on account of the large swath of areas adjacent to the Huzick River. Mr. Jonathan Cooper, Mr. Scott Grimallion and BCRC made a presentation on the recently completed Dorset Housing Study. One of the findings for Dorset was that twelve percent of households were seniors living alone. That seemed like such a large number, which may be approximation that scales to Powell. Such residents may require special consideration and services during adverse weather events or other situations. The study also identified a critical need for lower income, affordable, single and multifamily housing development. Housing stock aging is significantly weighted toward older, pre nineteen seventies stock in Dorset. And that's it for correspondence for me.
Thank you.
And I have one from Ellen, our delegate tax collector. Um, the Powell Estates has withdrawn its request for assignment on two mobile homes. The town of Powell purchased at two separate tax sales. So as of now, we still have the properties of Gilbert Squires, Bonnie Brown and Stacy Whitney and Tim and Joanne Wilson. If you guys remember, we talked about that.
Yes.
Want to purchase some of these back out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any excess weight permits, Hannah?
We do. We have um, these multiple reviewed by Joel and approved by um, Brakes, Distler and Company, West Oil, Camp Precast, Consolidated Communications and Channel Donovan, all of our fleets.
Make a motion that we accept the excess weight permits and our road formans RV reviewed.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Did everyone review the um, gravel crushing? Um.
Yes.
Bits. Mm-hmm. As you read, I'll read Joel's letter. And put this into the record. We opened the bids for the gravel crushing on Wednesday, the twelfth. Hunter Excavating was nine hu- nine dollars and fifty cents a yard for a total of forty-seven thousand, five hundred. Basin Brothers was seven dollars and seventy-five cents a yard for a sum uh, of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars in the gravel crushing fund and twenty-eight thousand, forty-six dollars in the gravel sand riprap line. So we have enough to cover the crushing. They're going to do, um, we're gonna do four thousand yards of crushed gravel and a thousand yards of crushed stone. I recommend going with Basin for seven seventy-five yard. I will send a copy of the bids. Let me know if it's okay to go ahead with it. Also, on another note, well, let's deal that and then I'll read the bottom of Joel's. So Joel's recommending that we go with Basin Brothers for seven seventy-five yard. I don't remember what it was last year. Um.
Don't think it's that far off.
I don't think it's that far off.
Seven fifty, I say, I think it was seven.
That's what I thought. I was thinking seven, uh, seven fifty a yard total. Okay. So they're, they're.
Not far.
No, no, for the, for the price of stuff, they're giving us a pretty good deal.
Yes, they are.
So what's the most, um, make a motion we approve? Basin, yep, okay.
I'll second.
Well, most of Florida will approve Basin Brothers to do our gravel crushing and crush stone. Four thousand yards of crushed gravel, one thousand yards of crushed stone. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. This is also from Joel. Which this is kind of good news too, actually. Also, on another note, the state is going to grind and re-blacktop Route seven from Park Lawn Cemetery to the Mass Line. They asked me if we wanted the grindings and I said, yes, it's excellent to mix with the gravel for compaction. We will have to put the two, put our two tandem trucks on the haul when they do it. They're also going to have some clean fill and I said I would take that also to put against the line between Hibbard and the town in which they were supposed to do that at some point. This was before my time, but a good opportunity to do some of it. The agreement is what he's talking about was before his time.
Right.
Uh, we all know that. I just want the taxpayers and residents and viewers to know that that's an agreement that was before Joel came on as the road foreman. Um, and I think probably before any of us were on the board, definitely just one of me, but.
Yep.
Probably all of us. So let's just a side note from Joel. Um, he's right, the, the grinding's mixed in there, make excellent gravel and stuff.
Help lock things together.
Yeah, locks it up to get nice. Perfect. Which brings us to the planning commission interested participant meet and greet. That's you, sir.
Yes. Questions? I, well, I have a question. How large is your?
Can you just introduce yourself to the?
Certainly, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Roy Larson. I've lived here four years. I'm up on Field Way. All right. What can I, what can I tell you? Or what, what would you, how would you like to start this?
You said you had a question.
Uh, I was wondering how large the planning commission is. How many members?
Was it five of you?
Well, it's a seven-member board.
I see.
That's how many slots there are. And we have two alternates, but currently I think we're sitting at six members.
Okay.
Okay, I understand.
Well, Tara gave us some list of, um, she did.
Yeah, so if, if you appoint um, Roy, he would be an alternate.
Okay.
Because um, Jim Winchester did submit his letter of interest, so he would like to continue his role on that board also.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, just to be clear, just because it's an alternate position, you can still, you're still welcome at all of their meetings and participate fully. You don't have to sit back in a corner.
Yeah, I would hope.
Hope that nobody shows up.
I, I would hope so because I want to keep up with the progress of the, of the committee and.
Exactly.
Doing.
Exactly, you know.
Uh, I read the town planning report. It's pretty interesting. Uh, it says there's a lot to be done, but you know, it strikes me that it's, it's a Vermont issue all the way around and it's, it's all over Vermont. Uh, you, you know, your old, older housing, you need jobs, uh, you need a better tax base, uh, you know, what.
Kind of a broken record.
I'm sorry.
It's kind of a broken record, right?
Not to me, but it, yeah, it's, uh, it's certainly universal, I think. It's everywhere I go. And I know Bennetton's trying to settle with tourism. Uh, and they've got Bennetton College here, but uh, I'm not sure where Powell would go with this, honestly. And it's an interesting question. Uh, you've got the racetrack. I understand somebody wanted maybe develop that for RVs. I would assume there's utilities there, but I know nothing really about this. And uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my ignorance.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak from the zoning administrator's position. Um, just to bring you up to speed a little bit. Cause I, I am also the zoning administrator in Powell. Right now, there is um, a multitude of projects, potential projects coming into town right now. I have um, been contacted by several different people and different types of businesses. Um, mostly smaller. Um, but some of them are very interesting. And I think they're, I think they're a great fit for Powell. Um, so I think the planning commission is gonna have a little bit of um, little work to do. And I, and I, as well as the development review board in the near future. Um, so I think, I think it's important to have people on both the development review board and the planning commission who are going to be involved, who are going to be attentive, who are gonna be willing to do a little research on their own when, when um, Hannah or, or Tara can't, don't have the time to do things. Um, that's just my opinion, you know, I, and, and I've been working closely with several different people actually in the last two months and some of it's pretty exciting, actually.
Oh, that's great. I mean, uh, it's, it's not just dollars, but it's culture as well.
Exactly.
As well.
Exactly.
And that's very important. One feeds the other, I think, in my experience at least. Uh, I can tell you a little about my, a little bit about my experience if you'd like.
Yes.
Uh, things is that I was a project manager at Harvard until they laid project managers off in two thousand eight in the crash. And then I worked as a, an energy consultant for the university, not a consultant, but I worked for university doing energy audits. Uh, not a very high level position. Hurt my pocketbook. Uh, then I was the director of operations for the university school, but also uh, when my wife died and I moved here from Florida, uh, I worked at, for Brock as their homeless counselor. So I know a little bit about the housing in Bennington and uh, the types of issues you come up against with people who are less fortunate, let's say. Uh, a little down in their luck, so. Um, yeah, I've got a little perspective is what I'm trying to say, not, not.
Excellent.
As good as some.
Well, but I think it'd be a nice add to the board.
Well. Does anybody have any questions? Bob, you have any questions for?
Oh, I'm good. I, I think it's, it's nice that we have uh, individuals who are interested in, in, in serving on the planning commission. We certainly have the open spot. Um, I'm, I'm really glad that you're stepping up and, and, and willing to put in that uh, that unpaid effort. I guess there's a stipend.
I'm retired, so, no, I, I actually work part-time, but yeah, I have time to, to not get paid.
It, it sounds to me like um, with some of your experience, um, if not all of it in, in your jobs, various jobs, sounds to me like you'd be a great addition to the planning commission. Would bring maybe a different perspective that we might not have there now on, on certain things.
Yeah, well, I hope so. And uh, you know, I look around and I see all the farmland that you guys have here. You've got great farmland. And a lot of it's underutilized. Many people just don't farm anymore. You know, I wonder if.
Trust me.
Anyways, I, I won't, I won't go into the weeds of this, but I uh, I, I think you have some real assets here. What I'm trying to say.
What's the board's pleasure? Do we have any more questions, any comments?
We don't have any more applicants, correct, Tara?
No, um, just Jim submitted his letter of interest to continue, but that was it.
Right, okay. So, I mean, if we have room, I'm more making a motion to add Roy to the planning commission.
As an alternate?
As an alternate, yep.
I'm second.
And how would I get started? Would somebody contact me and say, you know, the, the meeting is now or should I just look online and see when the meeting is?
Um, no, I think Hannah, are you here tomorrow?
Yes.
So would it be possible for you to come in tomorrow?
Sure.
And, and meet with Hannah and she can get all of your information, um, your email and, and all of that. We, we may already have some of it, but she can get you started on everything to get you going.
Yeah, the afternoon, okay for you?
Yeah, that was perfect. I'll be here till three.
I'm sorry.
I'll be here till three.
Oh, okay. That's, that's good for me.
Okay, perfect.
Perfect. All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
You come in tomorrow and Hannah will, will get you started.
Okay, sounds good.
Should we reappoint Jim while we're?
Yes, I think we should.
Yeah, I also, I actually, since we're moving into that, I have two reappointments for, well, three because um.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, let's do the, let's do the nine-one-one coordinator first because uh, that, I don't want to jump off the agenda and we didn't change anything.
Right.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
I'm just looking at, this is the version that was warned, but I printed you off the wrong version. I added these two.
Oh, okay.
These two are here. For the SWIP and then the anti-idling policy. These were the warned versions. I just printed you off the one without the on it.
Okay.
So it's, it's just the next item. You didn't miss anything.
All right. But this is the warned version here.
It is the warned version, yes.
So I'm gonna ask the board at this point. I'm gonna reread the warned version of the agenda. And I'm gonna ask you to approve, approve this re-warned or the warned version. Okay?
Properly worn.
We haven't done anything out of order, order yet? Great catch. We're good. I just want to make sure that we're on top of things by, by reapproving this warned version. So the warned version of the agenda, call the order, board member roll call, approval of agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, the warrants, correspondence, excess weight permits, gravel crushing bid award, planning commission interested participant meet and greet, solid waste implementation plan amendment review, anti-idling policy review and discussion, reappoint the E nine-one coordinator, open positions in reappointment discussion, old business, ARPA money discussion, public comment, executive for personnel, executive for personnel discussion regarding public official, public comment and adjourn. So the only two items on here that are different or they're additions actually on the warned version are the solid waste implementation plan amendment review and the anti-idling policy. And I should have caught that because we have the anti-idling policy in front of me. I was not, it's, it's our fault totally as a team. Sorry, you know. But nice catch though. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to um, reapprove this warned version of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Sorry.
I remember reading that.
Okay, I, I know and I did too. I just have so many things going in. Solid waste implementation plan amendment review and that's you, sir. I wondered why Tom was coming through the door. I'm thinking, what's he coming through for?
Well, there's a reason.
Yeah, sorry, Tom.
But we need to get uh, a copy from all of you just to, like, just to follow along. What, what this amounts to, guys, is that uh, here's one for Brian then, if you'd like to have it. What it amounts to is that uh, the implementation plan has to be amended. There's, and there's two amendments on, on this, if you go see it. Uh, we're, we're in the midst of getting this permanent household hazardous waste facility put in Bennington. All right, we have the, the things that are ordered and uh, RJ's gonna be doing some paving up there on the concrete pad to set these units on. They're prefab, they're, there's like trailer or shipping container type things, but they've got multiple doors on them for different types of hazardous wastes and they have to have fire suppression and all of this. So we're gonna get these things done. And we have a, we're gonna, we got another meeting coming up uh, next week. We're, we're really getting hammered with this thing. They want to try to have it in place and running in June.
Of this year.
This year. And then what we're going to do, all the, all the towns have to approve the uh, the, the things because this is our solid waste implementation plan. This is why we have the alliance, you know? I mean, if we were to try to do this ourselves, it'd be astronomical, you know? And, you know, basically you'd be doing the same work that they're doing and it just costs us way too much. But this thing's gonna eventually, it may not be right away, but it's gonna eventually save us a lot of money cause the, to, to get these, these days that they have, you know, when they bring them in, they have one in Bennington, they have one in Dorset and they have one for uh, up in Reesboro for Stanford and, and Reesboro and stuff. And uh, they're very, very expensive. I mean, just to set it up is over twenty thousand dollars. You know, and then disposal costs and the handling and stuff. So if we have this, they can have certain pickups, they have uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of different places that they were looking at and I think they're gonna probably go to Clear Harbor, but I'm not sure yet. That's something we'll do in May when we look at all the prices. But what it is, is they come around and they'll, they'll take your stuff out. And what'll be, it'll be opened up one day a week and you'll have to get an appointment to come in there. You'll have a fifteen minute span to come in so that they can take your stuff and they'll put it away and, and, you know, they'll take it, write down and have a computer and put all, everything that they have, what they've taken and so forth and uh, so forth. So that, that's really all we need to have, have approved here. You have uh,
What is the cost of the town?
Uh, we've already paid it.
Well, like that, that's good news.
Yeah.
Oh, we already okayed.
But, but, oh, I just wanted, every time, every time you go with solid waste, there's always a cost and it's all.
That's what I was just looking to see.
I looked, I said, that's what I skimmed through and I didn't see it.
Wasn't it?
It's uh.
Ten thousand?
Uh, the whole thing's gonna be a hundred and seventy, but we got matching grants.
Grants, right, but then we have to pay ten thousand upfront.
Something like that.
I don't remember that. I remember ten thousand.
Here's, here's the.
That was a couple of years ago.
Right.
The, the proposed amendment and so forth and uh, the services offered and all of this stuff. So, you know, we get down to that. We don't know exactly what days we're gonna be open. We're gonna, you know, just try to work it all out. We, we don't have everything done exactly yet, but we need all the towns' uh, approval to do it. Because we don't have the town's approval and that town will be out of SWIP probably what it amounts to. probably, what it amounts to. So it's basically, you're going to have to, somebody's going to have to do it, you know, because we can't, we can't take care of this ourselves. There's no way.
So so if there's no cost to us, what are we approving?
Addition, addition. We're just approving the the amendment to the SWIP as well as to.
I mean, the facility, it says the facility will be open seasonally, May through October, minimum of eighteen weeks of operations, minimum of four hours per day.
Yeah.
At least one quarterly generation.
Right. So it's basically what we're setting this thing up for, and we're trying to save everybody's money. I mean, it's going the whole way down. What Bennington is doing is they're going to do the hardscaping and stuff. They're putting the pad down and stuff, and that's part of their their money going into it.
Right, they're going, yeah.
Yeah, so they're they're doing that. But this is what we're looking at here, you know, and it's something we we really need, and then we don't have to do those single days on Saturdays and stuff because they really get to be, they're very expensive. It just keeps climbing higher. And another thing is, we're losing some of the state grants. When Michael Badger was here, he was always really good about getting the state grants, but they're running out.
Yeah.
And I I just mentioned something to Nelson at the transfer station about that. I said, we need to get get back on these manufacturers to get back with the pesticides and the herbicides and things like that. Mike knows more about that than any of us, I'm sure, you know, but you know, they were they were paying some of this. It's just like the the electrical manufacturers paid for the 4S of tubes and stuff, and battery manufacturers paid for the batteries. So these are things that don't cost us anything, but we're losing those
Grants.
Those grants. And that really saves us a lot of money. I mean, we would save, uh, well, we used to have a budget for like twenty-two thousand. We're paying fifteen thousand a year because all the grants are coming back and everybody split it all out. It's all based on population. So this is, this is what we're doing.
So you're you're, basically, you came in to ask us to approve this amendment?
Yes, and I think the back page has a sign page, you know.
I saw that.
You do that.
Board, have any questions for Tom? Bob, we're good.
I'm good.
You made questions?
No, I don't. Oh, Kara.
Nope, no questions.
Okay, nice seeing you.
You too.
I'll entertain a motion from the board to approve the amendment for the Bennington County County Solid Waste Alliance.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All of them favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian, aye. Mike, aye.
Very good.
Do we have a?
Where's the one that you want?
Yeah, where's the one you want signed?
I have that to yours, Mike. Tom probably has the same thing.
It's the back page here.
You have so much to write here sometimes.
I know, yeah. The one you want. I can't wait for the talk. Oh, we're going to sign this one. I got it right here.
Thank you. You take care of that, and I have a meeting on the beginning of May. Oh, I did want to mention something for people that are watching, so what we're having the green-up days for Saturday, I think it's the sixth of May, having that coming up. The bags that are in, I have posters I put all over town on Tuesday, and they can contact me at the transfer station when we're open, and then they come up and get all the bags they need. Because I have, I've got a couple hundred up there. Well, actually, not up there, they're still in back of my car. But they're locked up, so they're fine. So I just wanted to put that out there for people that are watching, so that they could, they know about that. And I think I'm going to be going to Front Porch for them tomorrow and posting on there. If they can come up there and hopefully get these towns cleaned up a little bit, right? It's always a nice thing. All right? Any, any questions for me? All right.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Um.
Do you want this, or do you?
Tom, do you need this?
We got to move.
She's on, she's on mail.
Anti-IDling Policy Review and Discussion.
Follow me. Ask that.
The only question I had, I read it. Don't have it in front of me, but it said.
Anti-ID, anti-idling policy review discussion. Any questions on that?
So my only question is, I don't have it in front of me. Do I have it in front of me?
Okay.
Oh, I read it at home. Let's see. When they were talking about the town equipment and the town vehicles, and then it said town employees, they don't mean the town employees private, correct?
Correct, yes.
It's only town?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Good question.
Thank you.
At least to be clear.
Hopefully, Fire Department EMS is exempt.
There's We're not town-owned, so we're fine. This is this is our town-owned equipment and.
And town-wide property. I want to specifically say that because if they're parked.
I'm going to read this.
They're parked at a business, they can leave it running, but if they're on town property, they can't leave it idling. I just want to make that.
Right, I'm going to read, I'm going to read through this really quick. Uh, how to reduce air pollution, anti-idling policy for company property, statement and purpose. Policy seeks to reduce air pollution, employees, visitors, and other exposure to vehicle exhaust by discouraging unnecessary idling of vehicles on property owned, operated, or managed by Town of Pownell. Right, first, first statement, right? Definition, for the purpose of this policy, a fleet is defined as all vehicles owned, rented, or leased by Town of Pownell or operated for the purpose of conducting business on behalf of the Town of Pownell. Background, motor vehicles are the largest source of a number of air pollutants in Vermont, including air air toxics, the ozone precursors, volatile organic compounds, and nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and greenhouse gases. Air pollution impacts our health, economic growth, and quality of life. Vehicle exhaust, including exhaust from idling vehicles, contributes significantly to air pollution. Statement of policy, drivers are advised to turn off vehicles when parked on property owned, operated, or managed by Town of Pownell and not restart vehicles until necessary to depart. This policy applies to all vehicles, including vehicles owned and operated by the Town of Pownell, vehicles operated by employees of Pownell. Posting idling of vehicles is prohibited, street signs where they can be easily seen by vehicles parked at the Pownell Highway Garage. Posting idling reduction pledge as appropriate on the premises. Exemptions, the request that a driver turn off a vehicle and refrain from idling does not apply for the period or periods during which idling is necessary under the following circumstances. To provide for the safety of vehicle occupants, such as in cases of extreme hot or cold conditions. To run the air example, to run the air conditioner or heater under extreme heater cold, really. To operate safety equipment such as windshield defrosters. To use lift equipment or other equipment necessary to accommodate individuals with one or more disabilities. To power work-related mechanical, hydraulic, or electrical equipment when specific traffic, safety, or emergency situations arise. In any of the above exemption cases, if equipment can be run from the battery, drivers should refrain from idling unless there is a significant concern of draining the battery. Oh, implementation, and then there's just a date and place for signatures. Is there any questions, concerns on this?
You need seven questions. That's all I care about. Is it their private?
Um, I'll entertain a motion. Some, I don't see anything wrong with this, on this policy here, actually. Tara, is this, this is like a generic state policy or something?
Yeah, and it's, Joel needed it for a grant.
Yeah, right.
An admissions grant.
So, we, that's right, we had to put this policy in effect for for a grant for the, for our road crew and and for our roads.
Lord.
And it's not a bad thing to have, anyway. I disagree with some of it, but it's not my place. All those in favor? Did I get a motion?
I got it. So moved. I didn't hear a second.
Second, I didn't hear you say a little move.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt this anti-idling policy. All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Okay. Uh, reappoint the E91 Coordinator. Everyone saw Priscilla's.
Yep. Yeah, and just so public knows why we're doing this, your wording before didn't include her reappointment. It only discussed her increase effective July. So just to be really clear, we wanted to redo it.
Okay. I thought we had taken care of it.
Yeah, you did.
We didn't.
We didn't reappoint.
That's, that's fine. Thank you for catching that.
Any questions on that, comments? Um, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Priscilla as the E91 Coordinator, Priscilla Maxon.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Open positions in reappointment discussion.
Mike, before you go through that list, can I just read the two letters of interest that I have?
Absolutely.
Um, so the first is from Craig Odell. Dear Pownell Select Board, I would like to continue my appointment as Emergency Management Director for the Town of Pownell for the next fiscal year. Uh, thank you, Craig Odell.
Anybody have any questions about that? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Craig Odell for the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Uh, any questions, comments? I'm going to get, I'm going to give one quick comment. Um, I've been working with Craig on this, on a particular project that that he's been working on. And we we don't have him in the building yet. But we have him in our possession. Craig has them in his possession, I should say. So I attended a seminar, and I don't mean to drag this on, but I want to make, this is a pretty important thing. I attended a training with Craig. I don't even remember, maybe back in November, October, something like that, in the Fire Departments, EMS, Personnel, State Police, and Law Enforcement Agencies. And it was basically, it was, it was an active shooter training course. Out of that, um, of course, everybody knows me. I'm not one to sit back and not say something that's on my mind, right? So it was basically for first responders. My opinion of that, and it's basically set up for schools. And my opinion was that they were missing their first responders. They they missed the targeted people. The first responders are the the teachers and staff and whoever's in that school building. They're they're already there. They're the first responders. So out of that conversation, long story short, out of that conversation, there was a, there was a federal grant at the time. Craig did all the legwork. I did nothing with it. I'm giving him credit here for this one because he did it. Um, he applied for twenty-five Stop the Bleed kits through through a federal grant. We received those kits. I don't remember the breakdown about this. I'm I'm sorry, but I think, I'm pretty sure ten of them are going to go into the school. I think there's two going to come into the town office. One's going to go to our constable. This was Craig and I kind of agreed on this. And I think the bounds are being split up between the two Fire Departments and the Rescue Squad. I think it's an incredible um, thing for, look, we never want to use them, but they're there. And and there's going to be, our school here in Pownell is going to be the first one in the district, in this district, that's going to be trained in how to use them. We're in the process of setting that up right now. I've got the district to approve, they they're approving the pay to have the people come in and train our our school staff how to use these kits. I'm also going to bring in the road crew if they want to and be trained on this, as well as office staff here.
Any any town employee that, I would strongly encourage them if they're at all interested and willing to take the training. They should do.
Let's face it, if if something like that ever happens, it's it's a really tough situation, but if we have the equipment, it's certainly going to help. It should.
Ellen and I can also show the office staff how to use them because we were in the training as well.
That's right, you guys were there. I forgot that, Tara. Yeah.
So I just have a question, because you have Oak Hill and you have HeadStar, are they involved in this at all, since they're kind of like on the campus of the school?
They haven't been, Angie. I don't know about HeadStar.
Right.
Because they're semi-connected. I don't, but I don't, to the best of my knowledge, I would say that Oak Hill has not been.
Maybe that's something you could bring up to Greg. I don't know.
No, I could. I, you know, I.
Because unfortunately, if something like that does happen at the school, I'm sure that, you know.
Look, who knows what's, who knows what's out there in this world?
That's right.
I'm just, I'm just extremely proud that that Pownell's E9, or our our Emergency Management Coordinator went ahead and got this.
Yes.
Got this ball rolling, okay? I'm proud that Tara was there on the on the initial training with Ellen. You know, um, and and like I said, we're cutting edge, so to speak, with with the entire district. And I've since spoken to the district people through my personal contacts with them. Um, it's it's, it'll probably end up being through the whole entire school district.
It should, right?
Oh, it should. That's right. That's right. I, you know, I, I've already, I've already started that ball rolling. It's just a matter of now we got to just roll it.
Yep, we got, we're going to be doing a big one in Bennington also. So I just, what some people may not understand, the Stop the Bleed kits, if the response team is going in, say the Police Department's Tacticals Team is going in, if you're sitting there and you have gunshot wound in your femur, for instance, they're going to step over you, or they're going to drop one of these kits off if they have, they're, that's, their goal is to go, they have, they have a different goal, but they're not going to, you may think they're just stepping over you. They're going to drop a kit. Well, if you're a teacher or somebody that's been trained, at least you'll know how to administer this kit on yourself also, if not somebody else that's with you. So that's.
I didn't, I didn't want to take up a bunch of that time. I'm sorry. I just, I just thought that's a really incredibly important thing. And and it's something that that I'm really proud that Craig was able to solidify those kits and and move forward with them.
That's awesome. There's a lot of work involved in it.
I, 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 I'm just bringing it up, you know, I've been doing something like work for him, but not not a ton. He's, he's done most of it himself, so.
So we have a motion table, right?
We have a motion on the floor for Craig. All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
Okay, the next is, uh, dear, from Jim Winchester. Dear Select Board, it has been my pleasure to be seated on the Pownell Planning Commission over the years. I have shared and gained valuable insight and have enjoyed working with the members and townspeople while watching our great town grow and change. I would like to serve another term on the Planning Commission if you so choose. Thank you, Jim Winchester.
Make a motion to accept Jim's application.
Second.
Or reconsider.
Discussion.
Treatment.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
Those are the right words.
Do you want me to read the openings, Tara, or do you want to do it?
Um, I can.
Okay, perfect.
So for the DRB, we have one alternate position open. Um, we filled the only alternate position for the Planning Commission tonight. Parks and Rec is always looking for new members. Conservation Commission. So we actually have four vacancies on this. Not something that we have used in recent years that I'm aware of. It's basically, it was voted at some point by the townspeople that we would have this type of commission, and their duties, you know, are to do things like provide reports on minerals and coal and like natural resources and things like that in the town. So this is a thing that doesn't have to be filled, a position, positions that don't have to be filled, but they recommend that we keep it just in case in the future we have a need. Then we wouldn't have to go back to vote again. We can just kind of leave them empty as far as we're concerned, I guess. Um, so Tree Warden, that is currently vacant. It was held by Dave Dunn Jr. We are not sure if he wants to continue with that or not, but this is a position that has to be appointed by the Select Board. We cannot leave this one vacant. Um, so if anybody has contact for him, that would be great if you could have him reach out to us if he's still interested. And then zoning administrator.
I can reach out to Dave. I can reach out to Dave.
Okay, thanks, Mike. And then zoning administrator, currently held by Mike, that's up, I believe you said August, right, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the BRCRC delegates, we have one open vacancy. Walt Klinger has been doing a great job with the position that he holds as our representative. Um, the BRCRC delegates, we have one open vacancy. Walt Klinger has been doing a great job with the position that he holds as our representative currently. Um, but we do have an availability for two representatives if we wanted. Then there's vacant positions of the home health rep in the survey of wood, surveyor of wood. Those can be eliminated by the select board if you so choose. Um, the surveyor of wood was previously held by Dave Duns also, but that's up into twenty twenty-three. And then there's a few that aren't, um, required to be appointed and they're currently empty if Dave Duns doesn't want to take them back. Um, but they are fence viewer, townkeepers, and inspector of lumber and shingles. So those are, this like word may appoint, so we are not required to fill those vacancies. If somebody is interested, then we certainly could. So I think we're left with, certainly tree warden is our, our, um, big one that we need to fill.
So I just texted Dave, um, if he was interested in reappointment to the positions that he holds for the town. And it was a flat yes.
Okay, awesome. Will you just ask him to send me an email and then I'll share it with you guys at the next, the next meeting?
Perfect.
That conservation one, I wonder if that's something. I, I don't remember it, but if it was something that we could utilize a group like that for our town lands as far as for ideas and projects on. No. Just. End up having a committee there.
What was that, Jamie? Sorry, I was texting.
For that conservation one, I didn't know if we could utilize, if, if we did gain a com, a group interested, uh, to use on our town lands. The, our wooded properties.
Yeah, it might be.
Um, for, to assist with the projects and stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, so certainly if there's anybody interested that has background in that sort of thing, that would be great, because, I mean, there's things like they can, um, make an inventory or conduct continuing studies on natural resources in the town, basically soils, the air, surface groundwater, and the pollution. Um, mineral and other earth resources, streams, lakes, um, wetland, um, you know, all important features in our town, so.
Tara, what's your email?
It's executive dot assistant at townofpanel.org.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Executive dot assistant dot.
Nope, at, executive dot assistant at townofpanel.org.
You got a long one.
Yep. You should have heard me trying to get through with Dell with that. That was a nightmare.
Okay, Dave's got your email. You should see that shortly. Next few days. Okay, where else are we at with that?
Um, that was the list of open positions, so, um, so we need a DRB member and we need a tree warden. Um, but I think Dave is going to fill that position, so.
Yep.
There aren't many open positions now, other than the Conservation Commission.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
Um, okay, any old business?
Yeah, just the railing quote, because I wasn't sure what direction the board would want to go with that, because um, it's kind of your choice. Do we want just plain steel painted that will look similar to the ones that are at the Old Town Office? Or we can have galvanized steel, which according to that company is what's recommended, um, for surfaces that are coming to contact with salt. So the difference in pricing is, you know,
I get that.
About four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So the first quote was fifteen thousand six hundred, and the second quote for the galvanized steel was nineteen thousand nine hundred.
Yeah. Any discussion on that? I, I have my preference.
The galvanized longevity.
And what Bob said.
Sorry, Bob.
Yeah, is this money coming, uh, we, this is budgeted money that we already have, or is this over and above our budget?
It's, it's budgeted money. It was in the town hall budget. It's a little bit over what we had estimated, but it's still within, um, we still have the money to cover it.
I think the, well, just my opinion, are we, uh, are we, are we in the discussion phase?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, I think in the long run, probably the galvanized is going to be cheaper for maintenance and for, it's, it's gonna be what we need, but I, I don't know that for sure.
My, my opinion is, I'm leaning towards the, I'm, I'm, I'm opposite you, Bob, only because, um, we already have the, um, black steel up at the old building owned up by the church. Um, I believe that design, and they both may be very similar. I'm just thinking that, that trying to live into because, because this building is in the historic district, that black steel is gonna look, in my opinion, like it belongs more than a galvanized steel, because believe me, I come down by respond road and look at the wood and it's like, oh, get that off there. But I know it's functional, but, you know, it just drives me up a wall. Um, and, and I think as far as the maintenance part of it goes, you know, I, I think moving forward, we're, we are, we have Billy that does that kind of stuff here anyway, so it's not like we would have to hire an outside contractor basically to come in and, and repaint whenever they needed to be done. Um, I, that's just my opinion. I mean, it's not, doesn't make it right or wrong. It's just, I, I think aesthetically and, and.
Symmetrical and aesthetics, I understand.
That's been over there. That hasn't been painted, correct?
Not that I know of, Angie.
Right, and that's been quite a few years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know when the last one got painted.
And actually, that's something that we may wanna, when, if we do the black painted and decide that here, maybe we want to have Billy paint that at the same time, so it all looks, and it's all done at the same exact time, freshened up, up to date.
You convinced me.
Thanks, Bob. Any more discussion on the railing? I think one bid was fifteen and change from Jay Burnett, and I apologize, I think the other one was a Harrington.
It was nineteen.
Was nineteen, nineteen?
Harrington, Harrington steel.
Was nineteen, nineteen and change?
Yep.
So basically, it's a four thousand dollar difference.
Yeah. And it's hard to keep paying on galvanized.
Yeah, and they also say that you should paint it for the first year, so it would just be galvanized steel. It wouldn't match the other railings like Mike said. So I kind of, I agree with him also.
I mean, that's, that's the only negative about it, because otherwise it just longevity as far as the galvanized goes.
And I don't buy that anymore, Jamie, and the years ago, galvanized steel definitely lasted longer, but I think in today's world, I don't think the.
They didn't now. Yeah.
I don't think the galvinization process that they do is as, as good as it used to be, because chemicals, well, and the chemicals have changed and, you know, environmentally. And everything, so, here's what it is. That's, I don't even know that for sure. It's just my opinion. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the steel railing from Jay Burnett with painting by Eric for the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Um, do we want to have Billy paint when they're doing the process? I, that can be separate from the motion, I guess, though. Okay, any more discussion on the motion? I have a motion on the floor in a second.
Motion included Eric.
Eric painting these.
Okay, not over there.
Not over there.
So they, okay, they don't come hot dipped already, huh? Or.
A motion on the floor. In a second, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
Now, do we want to just direct Billy? And we don't need a motion for that. It's something that
Yeah.
At some point, when he's not really busy for Joel or, or here, to go up and, and paint that with the same paint at the same time that, so everything looks all aesthetically correct? Okay?
Sounds like a good plan.
Anything else on your old business, Tara?
No, that was all I had.
Okay. Arca money discussion.
So I put this back on the agenda because, um, Darcy and Joel are really hoping they can have the go-ahead to shop for a mini excavator, because there's been some projects that are, um, coming up this summer that they could really use it for, as well as the sidewalks out behind the, um, new town offices, they're gonna need to be prepped, the, the site work is gonna need to be done. And that would save us money if we have our own mini excavator. We don't have to hire it out. Um, Joel could get that work done for us.
He submitted that, Darcy and Joel submitted that to us back in there. I don't remember.
Yeah, it was forty to sixty thousand.
You know, Joel came up the other day and, um, with one of the employees and ran mine. Uh, you know, I have a mini excavator that's my own, ran it on my property, so, um, what's your pleasure on, on the procedure? I, I believe, I believe that Darcy and Joel will use it. Um, I, I believe they'll use it a lot. Um, probably more than what we think they will. When they get into a tight situation fixing, uh, fixing some sewer lines in, you know, a trailer, you know, in, in one of the parks, mobile home parks, or in one of the residential sections, there, there's gonna be pretty handy to have.
Up connections and stuff. I think it's.
My only concern and question would be which department is gonna be responsible for maintenance upkeep and storage.
Joel usually does that.
I would assume it would be Joel and, uh, the road crew, but.
That's likely.
I'm just checking.
I think so, but I would, um, double check that with Joel.
I, I think that's a great.
And Joel and Darcy work really well together, so I can imagine them coming up with a plan to sort of split it or something like that, if it's a, a shared machine.
Yeah, split, split the.
I think they share, I, I think they share the backhoe and, and our rubber tired excavator when they can.
Yep.
Now, I, I believe. Now, don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure that that came up in a conversation that when they can use our, our regular backhoe or our rubber tired excavator, they do share that as well now. Which, and they remain under a road crew stored at the road, you know, at the, in our highway garage.
Line, yes.
Okay.
What's our pleasure?
I make a motion to have a good quotes on the mini excavator to be shared, uh, by the town, uh, foreman's.
To be paid for from ARPA.
To be, yes, be paid for out of the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
Any discussion? The only discussion I'd like is, I, I would like to, um, answer Brian's question of where, you know, and that, I think that's a very simple answer. Easy one to answer.
Yeah, easy, easy.
You had the question, so I'd like to have that answered. Um, and, and I think they could probably answer that when, when Joel or Darcy or whoever brings us back the, the, um, bids, prices, whatever, you know, they can say where it's gonna go, and I think we'd, we'd be fine with that.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Uh, any more discussion?
Well, do I need to change that, that we put it out for bid or go out for quotes?
I said, I said bids instead of quotes.
Yep. Um, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
One other thing with the, with the ARCA money, um, as I've heard from the rescue squad, that they would, um, prefer to have an answer yes or no, whether you will approve their request. And I'm gonna look and see what the amount was. I don't remember now.
For generator, right?
Yes, for their generator, because, um, if not, they're gonna, you know, they need to move ahead with looking at other grants and things like that. Um, they were requesting fifteen thousand five hundred to sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'm inclined to say no, only because they're a private organization.
Uh, and if we were gonna consider it, I, I think we need to exhaust the grant, uh, exhaust the grant avenue before we would even consider it, right?
I, I agree with Brian. I, I think it's a really gray area, um, on, on that, I, I think. And, and I think Bob brings up a great point, um, and maybe they have exhausted the grants. I don't know that. Um, but technically, they are a private entity now, um, um, and unfortunately, if we approve ARCA money for one private business.
It opens the door.
I think it opens the door for every private business in town to come in for some, for some private. And, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing to do that either. It just, it's, opens up a whole can of worms of things that, you know, I'm not sure we're ready to tackle, too.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need a motion on that, Tara?
No, I can, no, I can just.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
I can give them the answer. It's not a big deal.
Okay. I think the board's in agreement that we, that we all say no. Okay.
Okay.
That was it on that?
For now, yeah, for now.
Yep, for now, no, that's fine. Moving right along, public camera. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
You can go ahead, Jim.
Hey, Jim, host of North Mason Hill Road. Just a couple of short, just short questions. First of all, I'd like to have Wendy or the assessors off our department or whatever, um, just kind of, um, for the minutes. Um, give the CLA the common level of appraisal percentage, which is, um, requiring the appraisal. Um, I know it's supposed to be between, I think, eighty-five percent and a hundred and fifteen percent. So I just wanted to make sure that we are within that percentage and have it into the minutes. Um, second of all, just to follow up with the, um, planning commission where I asked, um, if the, um, short-term rentals do have to go through some kind of, um, um, permit process for opening up a short-term rental. Um, I know a, a lot of businesses in town have to go through the process, or I would hope have to go through the process, just to make sure everything is fine. Um, the second thing is, Mike, you had some really encouraging, um, news about people that want to come into town and do some, um, um, opening of businesses and stuff like that. So I'm just curious if, um, there's any, um, how the process works. Um, is it just the butters of the property that are notified, or is there some kind of, uh, hearing that, um, um, or some kind of notifications for some of these businesses that are coming into the town? Um, the last one is basically, it, I can't find on the website, a nine-one-one coordinator job description. So I'm just curious with the, um, fee that we are, um, paying to the nine-one-one coordinator, just, um, exactly what the job description is that, um, happens. And I thank you very much and have a good night.
So I'd like to take a second and answer Jim's question on the, the potential businesses that have reached out to me to come into town. Um, so far, Jim, no one has formally applied for a permit or, um, I guess, I guess for a permit. Um, there's a property that's under contract, um, in town that they're potentially gonna put a business in. And I really don't want to divulge any of them until they actually have a permit on the table. Um, but I have had, um, a significant number in the last, when I say that, I, you know, I'm not talking about thirty or forty, but I, I'm gonna tell you that there's probably been, um, six to eight different businesses or people who want to start a business into the town of panel, contact me within the last three months. Um, some of those were, uh, were a one and done. Um, some of them I've been working on for probably even longer than three months. Um, I've been to some realtors' offices and met with people. Um, I've gone over bylaws with people. Um, I talked to a gentleman today about a, about, um, expanding a business that he's, he's in the processes of, of opening in town as it is. So that's kind of the process, Jim. I don't know if it's really would go to anybody but in a butter, but it is, it is warned as a public hearing when we have to, definitely when we have to change use. And I, I can't speak for the DRB, but I would assume that when they're doing a public hearing. And I, I can't speak for the DRB, but I would assume that when they're doing a public hearing, um, abutters obviously would have first chance to voice their yays or nays. And then I would think that if it was something of major significance, that they would hear um general public comment from people in town. But there again, we don't govern that. The select board does not govern the DRB. They're their own governing body, so to speak. Um, but I would assume that would be the process.
Hey, thanks.
Any more public comment here?
No, Jamie.
Yeah, I just wanted to wait for everybody else out there first. Um, I was speaking with Craig Odell. He wears a few hats in town, not just our emergency coordinator, but as a fire warden. Also, um, his people seem to not wanna oblige by the um burn bans and whatnot. And as a town, we can add stricter fines through our ordinances. And he asked me my feelings of it. I asked him to take and write something up. He said he was already trying to put some stuff together. And that he wants email myself or any member of the board um to let us know, and we'll add him to the agenda to share the rest of his thoughts on that um as well as um working with uh having a constable possibly respond with him as another set of eyes. Because some people are very unruly. Uh, they don't wanna be compliant at all, and when you tell them that the fire department's coming to put their fire out, their illegal burn, that uh they get threatening and everything else, so I guess he's hoping that we can do something through ordinances to assist him and give him a little more teeth also.
Well, I think that's something that we'll talk about when we, when we talk about Eddie.
Yep.
The constable going in, in, into doing some um.
And so it's kinda two layered, but.
Yeah, so I'd find, well, um, when Craig brings it to us, we'll add it to our agenda. And, and I don't disagree with any part of that. I don't think any one of us disagrees with that, because if there, you know, if there's, if there's a burn ban. Um, bless you, Bob. If there's a burn ban that's handed down by the state, it's not anything that, you know, Craig's doing as the, as the forest warden or, or anybody else. It's handed down by the state. You know, they, they, there's things posted on social media all day long about, about zones and red zones and unfortunately being colored by, and I'm not sure which one it is, but yellow and whatever, so um, you know, I just called Craig and asked him if I can burn it, and if he says no, he don't do it, so it's simple as that. Zones don't help me. Any more public comment, Hannah? Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to you moving to executive with personnel, and I don't know if there'll be action.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
Entertained a motion to uh come out of executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Brian, I.
Mike, I, and there'll be no action taken at this time. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel and discussion regarding a public official.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
Motion to you come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Uh, there'll be no action taken at this time.
So I'd like to open up for public comment, please.
Any person out there, nobody with their hand up?
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bye bye.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.